It's about time for this now on the work session, period city council Monday of August 14th, 2017, quarter lead is three hour call. Item three, riders for review and discussion. Item three A is a pump stations evaluation from Constantine Engineering. Mr. Burin, other than guests?
Yes, Mayor Council, of course I'm going to introduce Jim Kazem. Assistant with him today. First of all, just to remind you, pump stations we've been looking at are four pump stations, Bear Branch, Parkway, 41 North and Limley's pump stations. As growth in the city's increased, these pump stations, of course, need to increase or have maintenance associated with them. Following Constantine's presentation, I think ESG also has a quick presentation, maybe some maintenance on these pump stations.
Mr. Kazem?
Mayor Council, thank you very much. This opportunity again to come for you, a few more. With me tonight, I've got Mike Beckman, who's from our Charleston office, who's the project manager, design manager for the pump station project, as well as the water treatment plant project. And he's also involved with the West Water Treatment Plant area expansion project. So Mike, you're very familiar with the assets you have here in the city of Perry, and is a very experienced engineer, and is a lead in the design teams and evaluation teams for your own project. Also have with me tonight, Mr. Jase Brown. Jase is a new engineering associate who's joined us, who's got about a year's experience and he knows almost everything he's learning. Feel free to give him havoc we've been doing to join. But Jase is a recent graduate from Florida State University, and he's joining us, and he'll be spending several months up in Charleston, working with Mike on your projects, and then he's going to be coming back and he'll be assigned to a Warner Robbin office. So he'll be supporting us in that role as part of a resident engineer and supporting engineer for our projects. This time I'd like to turn it over to Mike. Mike's been the manager for the project, and this is quite a step.
Oh, Mayor Council, I guess all this... We were tasked with taking a look at four stations, 41 North, Limley, Bear Branch, and Parkway. And what we'll do this afternoon is just give you a quick overview of what we found, and then at the very end, there's an overall summary spreadsheet that will go into some of the things that I'm most concerned about, which is... We'll just talk about each of the four stations. One thing that we've come to notice by doing this study is that, at some point in time, your west collector line and your east collector line, depending on what goes on with that, will have an impact of how you go in and you upgrade some of these stations. So what we looked at was, we came in and we broke this apart, it's not that clear as it very is, but what we did was, we broke this apart into the components of each station, whether it be your force main, your pumps, your influent gravity, your effluent gravity. And we came in and we plotted all of those on the graph, and on the 41 North station, if you look at the data that we had on this in 2016, if you look at the blue line is your max day demand, or your max flow for that station. So the blue line is really the governing one, the red line that's below it is your average day demand. And then, as you see, that it starts crossing some of these components, which the purple line there is your actual pump station. So in about 2021, it looks like there's some work that's going to be done, need to be done on 41. The other thing that Chad specifically had asked us to do for his planning is, well, tell us how many ERUs, how many houses can, does that equate to? So it's the identical chart, but what you can see here is, if you're looking at right now, you're about, say, maybe 50 or 60, you start crossing that 200 line, the highway 41 door, there could be approximately, you know, 150, 160 homes added to that. Yes, sir?
One thing I want to make sure that everybody understands when we're doing these four stations is, you're looking at it strictly from a flow standpoint, growth and development. When he says we need upgrades, all of the stations need upgrades because due to electrical or mechanical issues, you see what I'm saying? So he's speaking purely from a growth and demand aspect, it's flow wise.
Capacity?
Yes. Thank you.
So now moving on to Limley, highway 41 looks good. There's capacity in that station, there's really no need, except what Sharon just mentioned now, that there is some issues with that station. Here's a, here's a good graph to understand how we looked at this flow, is a little bit better than what 41 was. So the red line is this arbitrary eight hour threshold that we look at, and what ends up happening on average day... Mouse is going all over. On average day, your eight hour threshold, what you start seeing commonly in pump stations is that you'll start seeing peak factors of two, and then you'll start seeing peak days of three. Those peak days don't occur very often, but they are out there. And each one of these pump stations has two pumps, and one, and they're completely done. It says one, one pump is in there to handle the flow, the other one is in there in case you have your maintenance or something like that. When both pumps are in the station, you have that capacity to run too. But typically, you try to stay away from that, simply because of that one day. So on Limley, you're looking at a 9.9 average day flow in there, so you should start seeing 18 to 27 hour peaks in there. And you'll see each one of these other two stations do that. We're getting up 24 hours a day, right there on that peak, that's only one day, however, you start seeing your other peaks in there, getting up to 17, 18. So this is how we evaluate it, looking at these stations and what capacity in them. Next slide. So here again, projected demand, and this is in gallons per minute, that slide didn't come out. Go, go to the next one, Jim, let's see if that one... Okay, here we get to the trigger points. Limley right now needs to be upgraded, that's 2010 over data, 2016. So one other thing that's occurring is that, so right now, that pump station needs to be upgraded. We found ways to manipulate the horsepower and the curves fairly easily to accommodate that. But come around 2021, the force main in this, in this case, be, needed to be upgraded. And then ultimately, even at build out, you can see that this station, the influent, effluent lines have adequate capacity. So recommendations, talked about that, we put a seven, eighth inch impeller on the existing pumps, we can reuse the pump, install seven and a half horsepower motor, I think Chad would agree, we used to doing that all the time. Midterm, we look at a new eight inch force main all the way from the station. Now what we have to do is, we have to get the discharge from an eight inch gravity line over to, I talked a little bit previously, that west side trunk main, so we would do that. And upgrade the pumps to a submersible. What happens then is Limley becomes such a large station, that's a 12 inch gravity line that that discharges too. Now we start taking a look at what can we do evaluating that gravity line that goes all the way down to the wastewater plant. Before we would want to come in here and make a recommendation on what we want to do with this pump station, because there's going to be pluses and minuses, which ways go, we don't have those answers right now without working at that. And this, these exact same slides are going through now for Bear Branch and Parkway. Bear Branch, average 11, you see a couple of those peaks up there above 24. And that indicates that if one of the pumps are down during one of these heavy rain events that would occur, one of these high flow periods in there, you know, there could be the possibility that if both those pumps are not running at that time, that there could be a short duration in there where you significantly surge out your gravity soon. They're in the eight hour runtime. And we plotted on there also what was done back in 2010 with the original report itself. Next slide. Okay, so on Bear Branch, pump station needs to be upgraded, that occurred in about 2013. The trigger point for the force main upgrade is next year. And finally, the trigger point for the gravities and everything is getting out to about 2024. So again, these are indicators that these stations, once they get 10, 11 hours average runtime on, it's really time to go ahead and take a look at them, that something needs to be done in the fairly near future. Next slide, please. ERUs, see where, you know, there's going to be available capacity, and I'll have all those summarized at the end, if I'm going to do that. Now, Bear Branch discharges in the Parkway, and these flow rates on Bear Branch are really getting to be significant. So anything you do on Bear Branch really impacts what happens on Parkway. Next slide. So short term, let's go ahead and replace the six inch force main now with a 12 inch that would handle future build out. Again, the pumps that are in there, we're actually going to be reducing horsepower in this station because we're increasing the force main. So right now, there, you'll have to do the physical work to replace the impellers and motors, however, it's actually less horsepower, because that force main goes up on steep hills about 9,000 feet long, so that's pretty long. Again, after that, what impact will happen if, let's take a look at the whole system. Next slide. Here's Parkway, getting up to about 11 hours. And over there on the left, you know, is that data point 100% good, but you know, that station, one day, there was two pumps running full time, 17 hours a day. But other than that, rather, you know, we're kind of smoothing out a little bit down here. Next slide. We get into GPMs, pump station to be upgraded at this time, based on this data. And then in about 2023, is a trigger point for the force main. And then finally, in 2030, will be the trigger point for the gravities. Next slide. And ERUs there again, you can go through there, it's very simple, go in and see how many households or ERUs that you have that you could accommodate, which I know is important to everybody here, that making sure you have capacity in those stations now. Next slide. So short term, there's two types of stations out there that currently in the system. One is what we call a self-prima, and another one is a submersible. Self-primas have their limitations on head flow, and typically get into a real hot heat situation. The submersible stations are preferred method. They have stations out there where you can put them in series and stuff like that, but that presents another challenge of itself. So, and it's my understanding that, you know, ESG has had very good luck with the submersible stations they have, so that's what we looked at. 85 horsepower submersible on that, the force main that was put in not too long ago was fine. Midterm and build out, there again, we get into, you know, the force main upgrade, and then how do we want to get all this flow to the main collector lines going through the wastewater plant. Next slide. Here, here's what I keep discussing, is the east and the left. Over here, this is, this is the Limley station, there's 12 inch gravity lines that come down through here, turns to 15, goes to 21s, and into the plant. Over here, there's, there's 21s already in there, going up to 30, maybe 36, that are in there. But when you, when you start looking at flow rates going out of, you know, over 2,000 gallons a minute, that starts, the capacity of even a 21 inch line starts becoming questionable. So the big plan, maybe six, seven years down the road, depending on how fast that flow comes in, primarily from Bear Branch on that side of town, that at some point in time, the whole big picture needs to be looked at, instead of putting in these higher horsepower. You can pump the flow with, with the pump stations that they have out there today, but you're also wasting a lot of energy if you're not doing efficiency, efficiently. So we'll want to take a look at that. Finally, I know this is what you all wanted to get to, but I really wish this would have not come. I'm not sure if there's any way we can... I guess you all can see it on your, on there, if you, if you look at what you have. Yeah. So what, what we did was, we did, we did a summary, 41 North, I'm going to look at here and here. Right now, nothing, but I think ESG is going to talk about some maintenance issues that are going on today about 41. And then the midterm improvements.
It's hard to...
So 41, right now you've got about 135 additional ERUs that can come into that station, cost $0 unless there's something going on with some just mechanical parts of it. Midterm, we can add another 186 ERUs out there, essentially with the impellers and the motor, that costs them about $55,000. Long term, which we'll cover at the build out numbers that we're looking at, would be to go to a proposed flow of 400 gallons a minute, would give you an additional 150 ERUs. We didn't price that out, because that's real 20 years down the road. Limley, what we're looking at now is, for about $30,000, come in and replace the impellers and the motors, which will give you another 185 ERUs. Thing to keep in mind about Limley, there's seven stations come to Limley. So depending on where that development occurs in there, anywhere in that region that comes in with Limley will impact this number, it's not just highway 41. And then finally, looking at redoing that force main, to get you another 583 ERUs, that costs us about $573,000. Then we get into, where I keep going back to the study of the west side trunk main. Bear Branch, looking at a new 12 inch force main at this time, as I mentioned, we would actually be reducing horsepower on that, that would give you an additional 491 ERUs. But I think Chad, that's what a lot of the development, those ERUs are coming in as we speak any day of the week. The flowing force main gives about 8,000 feet long, so with that and the motor, that's about $734,000. To go after that, we really need to take a look at the east side trunk main, because Bear Branch, you know, that, that's 700 gallons a minute, and maybe 700, 1300 gallons a minute doesn't really mean much, but 1300 gallons a minute is a lot of flow, that's two inches deep. So Parkway, current flow's 600, we're looking at upgrading the pump station to 1300, because that has to take all the flow from Bear Branch, about $600,000 for that. I know that's very quick, and I know you all are very busy, and thought this last sheet would probably be where the questions would come from, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions. So what's short term? Short term, how quickly is it going to be, in 12 months, 18 months, tomorrow? I don't, I don't, I don't think, unless there's operation wise, something that is coming up.
If y'all remember back in 2006, 2007, I believe ISE was engineer at the time, they were proposing in 2006, 2007, that these stations and these trunk lines be upgraded then, but you know, we were on that steep up climb, we were experiencing a lot of growth, those six, or seven, or eight, or nine didn't stop. Well, during that interim, when Jim took over as the city's engineer, he came back and gave you a real list of where, where he thought it was going to be versus where ISE was trending. And his trend has come to fruition. He was saying, Jim was saying you can push it, these expenses 10 to 15 years out, but that was 11 years ago, here you are. So you've been able to push them out 10 years, depending on growth and the way we're going right now, this is the busiest we've ever been, on our side of the house, and permits and issuing, you know, water for everybody, so I mean, we're the busiest we've been in 11 years on our career. So I would think, as, as fast as we can do some of these things, one of them is more of a maintenance issue, but I'll get to that one later.
We completed a master plan set for Warner Robbin last year, and we looked at growth for Warner Robbin, put them on the county, the whole handed in Perry, and to compare the numbers, and the growth has been parried at about two and a half percent per year. And that's historic growth, and what we were using as part of the injection, that we looked at Warner Robbin as well as Perry, so you get growing at an increaseable rate. Different year, you've got spurts, and we looked at it over about three, four year average, about two and a half percent per year. So with these numbers, I think if you're looking, some of those maintenance improvements that they had recommended, one of them immediately, in terms of short term improvements, which I think we were talking about spending on the impellers and the motors, he had a couple of those that were fairly immediate, and then some force mains that could be put out in a couple of years. Anyway, before you, before you got it designed, permitted, and then actually constructed, it would be, you know, two or three years after. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I'm going to go back and discuss it, you know, you get to the point of how long it takes to do it, and if it's immediate, and it's going to take two and a half to three years to get it done, means we better start working on it now.
Short term, immediate would be the pumps and the impellers. Those are quick pictures, and those are things you can do very quick. I think the total cost, you have about $8,000 in there.
Well, and then actually the force main for Parkway.
And the force main for Parkway, how much? About 500, 500?
About 500, 700.
Yeah. So, I mean, and it's not just you guys that are experienced, we've had a lull over the last decade really, and a lot of communities are experiencing these significant growths. We have a project in Brunswick, Georgia, where they're designing, they're finishing the design about bid miles of the 20 inch gravity and force mains, rather, to be able to divert flow away from some of these pump stations, but the development is concurrent, fashion is going to take the implement of it. So we're having to do some interim projects, upgrade some lift stations, and do some innovative things to be able to handle that flow for 18 months, while the contractors finish these new force main projects, after which, those projects will, will not be necessary to run until they're done, but you guys are in a better position, I think, to be able to do what Mike talked about, you guys, you know, Chad, and you guys jump on the projects very quickly, and I think you've got some time to be able to make these things through.
But the, the one thing about Limley that you have right now, that you just recently put in, extend by pump, pump helps during those periods, you know, that real high peaking period in there, extreme rainy events there, don't really have that much for Parkway.
Am I correct, if I'm wrong, but I understood Bear Branch to be the most immediate one over Parkway's, was it? Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Because you, the Bear Branch was the, I know you said Parkway, but I think there's significant cost difference between Bear Branch and...
Bear Branch is the force main, Parkway is the pumps.
Okay. So the, the pumps and the force main would have to go in at the same time, or can they be one going without the other? That's the question.
You can, but then if you come in there, you put that larger force main in coming to it, you're going to, there's going to be a period of time in there when that thing is basically the same capacity as what Parkway is, and then you start getting into that issue where, are you really dumping too much instantaneous onto the section? And if, if there's some capacity, holy capacity in the line, you will probably never notice it, but I also think that we mentioned, as we do mention in here, that you've already identified some areas of the gravity line that come into Parkway, looking at I and I. So you saw some pretty big peaks coming into Parkway, that you actually didn't see at Bear Branch. All three of them are in, need to start climbing, basically.
The kind of I and I flows that you guys reduced is significant.
Yeah.
We use this as an indicator, when we first started doing the I and I program, the influent concentration coming into the wastewater plant is about 80, which means that you have a lot of just water getting into your system, and now it's running, what is it, 150, 160, 180? It's doubled, so which means you've removed half as much water that was coming in, what, six years ago, seven years ago? That's a lot of capacity taken out of the, a lot of capacity freed up inside portions of the collection system, and easily many gallons per day at the wastewater treatment plant.
Jim, can you go back a couple of slides to one of those? And, and here's the thing, what, what Jim was talking about, this literally takes, because of the data that ESG have, this literally takes 15 minutes for us to tell you what the last 12 months' data did. And if, if there's some, if there's some reductions going on as far as the flow rate, here's what we figure happened here, is that was whenever you guys were in the rainy period, and you guys kind of went into the drought, and you can see that, and it's now starting to come back again.
But even with all the rain?
Even with all the rain.
Where you are today, versus where you used to be?
Where we used to be. So just literally at the drop of a hat, every, you know, quarter, or, you know, something like that, the I and I is getting renewed, let's take, let's take a look at this, it doesn't cost anything to evaluate that, then it may change one of, you know, the needed upgrades that we did. And we can run those numbers right now today. That ended in 16, so now we've got nine, eight, nine months worth of new data on this right now. So, so what runs for Limley for that contract?
Yes. You know, we had that old, that church home and all that came on there, see, you put that new pump station in there two years ago, and you added Danny Carpenter, the middle school, Danny Carpenter, on the street, you added that, and then you filled out several phases of wood, and that's all your flow, and then not to mention what's going on on Langston Road, and those areas coming back there too.
We also, you know, approved a subdivision there for about 250 hours as well, but they might want to build those out in a four month period, but somewhere over the next 34 years we're going to...
That's what I was going to say, it looks like this on the average, when we start a project, it looks like when we start engineering to the final construction, is usually around two years, some, you know, from the initial phase of looking at it, to it coming to fruition is taking two years or a little more? So now is the time to be getting our ducks in the rut.
Mr. Kazem, you have not disappointed every time you've come to 400, $1 million.
It's a big trip, but... I'm sorry.
It's, it's neither. The main thing I heard was that the majority of this expense is going to be after four years, so I can do one more term and let y'all work on it.
But the positive thing is that, when you do this, not to handle I and I flows, you're handling, doing it against the growth and the sister project, and that brings revenue in, so...
And that's good, it's a good thing, I'm giving you a hard time.
I deserve it, that's what I said. I give him a hard time, if you guys give me a hard time.
Well, the saying that stuff rolls downhill is true, but in this case, we had to pay to get it back to the pit.
All right, man.
What do we need to do? What do we need to do now? Mr. Gilmore?
We'll get back with you about the short term or something, skid, 2010. Plus whatever your next go round is, I think, ESG up next?
Yes.
41?
Does any member of council have any questions concerning this matter at this point?
As you prepare that, it would be good...
As you prepare that, we'd be good to have a recommendation of the funding. It works.
But I'd recommend, if you guys, you send me the runtimes up through July, we'll put that in there and see if we see anything different. We'll change it on the short term.
I'll likely would know, whatever's safe with I and I is lost on all the new customers. You can have one for one. Thank you.
No, big check.
All right, I'll look at it.
Here. Tell me when you gotta get a new slide.
I got it.
We gotta get you going right away.
Mine's just...
Can you reach for that?
Yeah, I can't do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Good slide?
If you wanna turn it off, I'll scrub it.
I would have you to turn it off.
Just don't keep it on.
There, stop. Got it. There you go.
All right, I'm gonna give y'all a little update on 41 North pump station. As far as capacity wise, it is in good shape. But the issue we're having with the hydrogen sulfide corrosion. It's a truck in 2004, Smith and Lewis, which is, that is not a, this is the one that says above, where pump said above. It's not the, the smearable pumps. It receives flow from three pump stations, Wood Eagle, the ratings, and also the home lift station. All right, if you look back here, you can see this is Wood Eagle lift station here. The red line indicates the force main, which is two, it's two, 125 miles long. It's about 11,900 and something. And at one time, whenever, before they really started building out Wood Eagle, it would take nearly 20 days for it to get from right here to here. And whenever that does, when it does that, it, it turns pretty much separate. It loses its oxygen, the pH drops, it releases the hydrogen sulfide. Now that they've built it out, there's a lot more arms going out. It's still a little over 24 hours before it reaches the end, which is still a long time. We had actually supplied to 700 parts per million. And for those who don't really know what hydrogen sulfide is, it's the, when you hear about the killing workers going into the sewer, and they die, hydrogen sulfide. So basically, the levels in there are so high that if you put somebody in there without the proper gear, I mean, it might have managed. But it also causes major corrosion. It also deteriorates concrete. I mean, it'll turn, it'll turn to almost the... If you look right here, you can see where it teed up all the metal on the outside. And the way this thing sits, is it sits on top of the lift station. And all the electronics right there was, so it's all fumes coming into the hood. And there's, I mean, there's a little fan here, but it's not, it's not quiet enough. There's just everything there. There you can see some, some structural corrosion right there. All right, this is inside the lift station. You can see, this is the pipe that is connected to the pump. I mean, it's, it's nearly gone, made from the corrosion. That's just the interior inside, the front of the doghouse. I mean, you can see it's just, it's eating up everything. Same thing, I mean, your structural corrosion. I agree, so you can see what we've done, what we've done so far to help it. We've made this an explosive brick box. You can see these, these blue rings here, and it makes it work. It keeps as much as possible out of the hydrogen sulfide that's still, it's nearly impossible to keep it all out. Now, can you see anything, anything that's not coated or anything with electronics is eating it up? There you can see, I mean, this, this is supposed to be aluminum coated, but I mean, it's just, it's terribly eaten up there. More corrosion. All right, so what we've done so far, I don't know, how long ago at the time, whenever we started building? It's been about five years, four or five years ago, we started building it with line, at Wood Eagle. And it helped, problem went away. I mean, for what, probably two years?
A year.
About two years it went away. And, and then it just slowly, it made its way back. And we've, we've done some BBC line and the termination manholes there. So I mean, literally, if you hadn't, there would be nothing left right now.
We've done it twice, Jim. Once with drought, once with that...
Bare branch we did twice.
Mm-hmm.
We've tested multiple types of detergent, chemical people trying to remedy the problem, but that ain't success of that. So this is since January 2015. This is our cost of what we, and this is the big thing, this isn't the, you know, the small thing that we fix on a daily basis. I mean, it's, it's on a daily basis, we have to work on this thing, because of the hydrogen sulfide corrode. I can't see how much it did, it's like, what is it, $16,000?
I can't see it.
Was it closer to 20? $16,000? That, that's what we've spent on since January 1, 15. And it's getting to a point now where it's just failing on a regular basis.
Several times a week, we're having trouble with electrician.
Yeah.
Ninja corrodes.
All right, recommendation, and we, we figure out some kind of chemical to add to 41 North, and Wood Eagle would be nice. The fumes, add some more ventilation to 41 North. But the probably best recommendation I could say would be to move to a flat station. And that's the smearable pumps, where the electronics are off, you know, 10, 15, 20 feet away from the wet well. And you know more hydrogen sulfide issues as far as corrosion goes. But it still needs, it still needs to do something as far as chemical addition to make it go away. Anything else?
This is...
I don't know, it's not gonna be cheap. Flat, the flat stations, I think.
That's one of your bigger stations?
You're about what, what flat stations are, Smith and Lewis or 25% more?
Yeah, this is a small pump station, I mean, relatively prepared. So I think you're talking about seven horsepower pumps, pumps or something like that, seven and a half horsepower pumps. So it's not gonna be a horrendous, you've already got the manhole. Hydrogen sulfide is a problem, it's like a lot of systems. Hydrogen sulfide is H2F. It comes in contact with water, the moisture inside the, the concrete there, it turns into sulfuric acid, H2SO4. Sulfuric acid, concrete, it eats the line from the concrete, and you just start to see the aggregate fall out. So that's a problem. As far as what to do to prevent the H2F, in these smaller lift stations, oftentimes it's really not cost effective. It's more cost effective to do it, just talking about it. Coat the inside of the wet well, scrub the odors so that you don't have odor issue with the rotten egg smell for the residents around there. And then manage that, because the only other thing to do is possibly add nitrates in one of the upstream, upstream lift stations. What the nitrates do is, they provide an oxygen source for the faculty of aerobics that are, I mean, found in the sewers there to use up the organic matter that's readily available, that the anaerobic bacteria are using to break down the form of H2F. And so you can aerate, add chemicals like nitrates. You can add the pH which raises the pH which minimizes...
Keep it in the, yeah, keep it in the liquid.
Yeah, we tried, we tried aerating it. We bought some tsunami pumps, we tried to aerate it, but it's got so many rags from the different places, it's just clogging up everything, something on it.
When I talk about aerating, it's talking about liquid oxygen.
Why not?
Saturate that water in there so that it stays in the school.
That's, that's an option, but it's very expensive.
It's very expensive to do that. So oftentimes on the smaller stations, what people do is they put the small scrubbers in there, try and treat the odor, coat the wet wells with a PVC liner or some other mortars.
It's already got a liner, and so we're good on the wet well.
Okay, then, then put the pumps and the controls off to the side. So it's really not, what they've recommended is probably the best thing to do. There's a cost that we can throw across together to get what we want to do.
That's all I got. I would ask that you cost, give us a cost analysis of replacing the pump and moving it over, whatever the, the best long-term solution will be. Otherwise, you're gonna be fighting this.
Yeah, it's a battle. It is. Definitely a battle.
Anything other, for council?
I'd like Mr. Custin, at your other business, with the same problem they have here, have you seen the other, the other place there?
Oh, absolutely. Which, like I said, Brunswick, have you ever driven into Brunswick? It's awful. And that, all that hydrogen sulfide comes from their, their whole collection system. That's, that's a 16 million gallon per day plant right there, the can of three plants. And that's about a seven and a half million gallon per day flow. And it, and it comes from all over, and just opens up right there. And we're working to fix that to them. And in that instance, it makes cost, it makes cost effective sense to add chemicals and substances to be able to treat it. It's a much higher flow. The other thing to do is to, to coat the inside, cover it, and scrub it. And scrubbing is not that expensive to be able to remove the odor. And that can remove the corrosiveness of the sulfide stuff there. But if you manage the, and inside the wet well, you use HDP pipe to be able to...
We did that.
Yeah, so you don't have corrosion to pipe in, so you just manage it.
When you say manage, you're talking about air three miles, air four miles?
Those are, you, if you go in and do it, it's a question to do. With the new smearable pumps in, below the liquid line, it's not corrosive. It's up above the liquid line where the, you get the moisture, and the gas hits that and you get concentrated sulfuric acid dissolution. So the pipes, the inside of the concrete walls, those are the places that you really worry about the corrosion. Pump station, the motors and the controls are sitting right on top of the lift station. Every time the wastewater comes in, it pushes the air out. It goes up through the little hatch button, so that it goes through the motors. Motors suck them air in, cool them, those linings off. It goes in the control panel, everything inside that little hut, it's a closed compartment. And then when it pumps down, well, it sucks fresh air in, and it pushes it back up. So you've got these exchanges constantly going in that are pushing hydrogen sulfide in and out of a control panel. It just rots and away.
Every collection has the H2SO4 problem, but what makes this one, I guess, a little different or worse, is it's the farthest one away. The farther you have to pump it, the worse the hydrogen sulfide issue is. If you've got something close, it's not as bad, see a lot to deal with.
Anything else? If you'll give us a cost analysis.
I think you have it.
We would appreciate it. Mr. Gilmore, anything further?
You guys gonna do the water treatment plant?
Sure. That's not... There you go.
I'd like to take just a few more minutes to discuss the water plant where we're at today. We did a 30% design review. And we feel like we have what we call the basis of design nailed down. Yet there's a, one item that wanted to just kind of step back and take a look at to make sure what we're doing on this plant, you know, is the correct way to move forward with pipeline.
Let me try to jump in a little bit. When we began the water treatment plant project, Harold was the city's engineer. And we met with Harold, we talked about the, what capacities we needed, what treatment technologies were available. We looked at water treatment plant number two, which is a conventional iron mains filtration plant. It has concrete filters and a very robust plant. And there's a price associated with that. And discussing with Harold at that time, he asked for alternatives. And so we went to what we call a pre-engineered system, which has sometimes a little bit lower cost. There's advantages and disadvantages to that. And the way we set up the project was to proceed from 0% design to 30% design, stop, take a look at what we're doing, and make sure it's the path we want to go forward. At the same time, we wanted the staff to go out and look at some of the pre-engineered water treatment plants. Obviously, they've been operating the conventional concrete basin plant for a number of years, so they are familiar with that, but they weren't as familiar with the package or the pre-engineered building. So they, we, we took a couple of, of the major manufacturers. And Chad and some of the folks from ESG went and looked at a couple of plants, one in Alabama and one in Florida, North Florida. And looked at those, and came back, and they identified some concerns that they had with the plants. And so we took a step back at that time and said, okay, well, let's look at that from a cost perspective, and then advantages and disadvantages of the two different types of systems. And so that's what Mike wants to talk to you tonight about.
So pre-engineered, pre-fines, we'll jump right on in to costs. What we did was, we presented the cost for packaged plant, pre-engineered plant. We presented that several months ago, firmed up the cost on that. And that total was 7.5 million. Actually, that number was, was represented after we did the 15% review meeting, because at that point in time, the size of the clear well and the other well were discussed at that time. Do we want to include that? So decisions were made at 15, and now we're at 30. But once you get past 30%, if you go in and you put a significant amount of effort into the design, and you completely change gear, it's not the correct way to spend your money. It's best to make that decision upfront. So we stepped back, and we provided a new updated estimate of 8.2 million, which just basically in, in simple terms is $700,000 add. So where, where, where is that money going? It's going into the concrete to develop the tanks for the cast-in-place, more conventional type system that basically would look identical to our treatment plant number two.
Let me, let me back up real quick here. When you do a comparison of costs, and you look at these, basically the plants, the pre-engineered plant versus the conventional plant, which you have the water plant two, everything is the same with the exception of the cost of the filter plant equipment. And Mike's gonna talk to you about the differences of it, but that's where the significant cost is. A little bit of difference in cost when you come down to some of the markups with the contractor.
And the electrical.
And the electrical.
And the pipette.
And a little bit, a little bit change in the piping. But the most significant cost is the difference in cost between the pre-engineered water treatment plant and the concrete cast-in-place water treatment plant.
Thanks a lot. So, plant comparisons. Really, there's only, there's only two primary differences between the... One is the marine grade aluminum pre-engineered tanks that are manufactured inside a facility in a controlled environment. The other one has, what a treatment plant number two is right now, has concrete tanks. Now, there is, there is a difference between the underdrains on the filter. And the reason why there's a difference there, that we wouldn't be supplying the same underdrains on there is that inside the aluminum tanks, you can't route that tight filter bottom into that. So there's a little bit more robust filter bottom that I'll talk about a little bit more into the other. All the remaining components are the same, that the treatment capabilities of both plants are about the same. All the chemical fees are the same. Your wells are still the same, your clear well is still the same. So there, there's not a whole lot of difference between the sludge. So what do both plants have? Both plants have the ability to run this plant basically from your computer there at your desk, you know, remotely. And in order to do that, you have to have a lot of electronics within the plant, whether you're, you're measuring levels within the water or you're, you know, you're tracking pumps that are on or off, or whatever that is. Those, those two are still basically the same. You have an internal system, and those components are virtually identical, if not identical on almost everything. The life expectancy of the marine grade aluminum is comparable to concrete. And the reason why we're able to make that statement is that your water comes in from the well. And we know that there's corrosivity issues out at the wells. We've re-talked through that at 30%, what we're gonna do, where they've had it come in and, you know, they've had flanges fall apart and bolts break and everything. We're, we're gonna address that on the well. But then it comes in, it goes to... But then it comes in, it goes to an airator because of the CO2. You come in and you, you add air to dissolve the CO2 and then you immediately add line to bring the pH up. So by the time it actually hits these tanks, the pH is about neutral at that point in time, short term. Uh, plant efficiencies, they're, they're comparable. Uh, the backwash rates are slightly, slightly higher, uh, for the pre-engineered type system, but it's within one percent. We're, we're looking at, you know, backwashing these filters for five minutes versus ten minutes. And that, that equates out literally to less than one percent. As I mentioned, the filter bottoms in the concrete tanks will have a slightly longer, uh, life expectancy, thirty years compared to forty. Uh, some people have filter bottoms in that lasted them twenty years and other people have where they last even seventy years. So that, that, that should be a, a pretty good realistic, uh, approximation of that. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, the difference in cost is about seven hundred thousand dollars.
Mark's perspective, it's more of a decision between you and your staff, if what facility you want. We can do either one. We don't, we don't sell either one of each. We just simply design it and specify global work and produce good quality water. Comes down to what you want to do and what our operations and maintenance staff might have as far as the facility go, so.
Well, I have a, I have a comment to make. I'm the one that asked Mr. Gilmore to let us stop and ask Chad, please just stop and take a look at it for a minute. Uh, I've been doing this thirty-two years. I have very, very minimal, uh, experience with these plants. I've probably got fifteen years' experience with the package plants. Jim has a lot more experience with them than I do. Uh, I know from our experience, this eleven years in Perry with the corrosivity of the water, I mean, we've had to replace everything from the windows to the, I mean, everything in the building, you know, when it comes in and status. So in my mind, I'm looking at Mr. Gilmore and I'm saying, I can't say, well, that's going to take you to twenty, thirty or not, a package plant. And what I have, and mine's different than his, the one I ran, is different again. So it's not throwing rocks at Jim's design. Jim's design, what Mr. Harold has in board in that book, so that's fine. I'm looking at it from a longevity issue, is this package plant going to take us in twenty thirty? Because right now, you've got one that was built down here in nineteen fifty-four and she's still pumping water. And we can keep her, we're going to put a little money in, you know, rebuild the well. Build's fine. And so that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm not looking at his design. I'm just looking at purely, is it going to take us to twenty thirty, twenty forty, twenty fifty? That's where you want it to take. You know, getting more business in, that's where our thing's at right now, you know, where we're at with water wastewater and then industries coming in, like, yeah, a lot of people looking at it. So I'm thinking from a longevity point, I have another new design. That's all I like about it. So what Chad's got, sell the money.
Chad, any comments?
I, I agree a lot with what Sharon's saying. Uh, pretty much, it's just a matter of where the city wants to spend the money. Do they, do we want to spend the money on the, uh, save the money upfront on the cost of the, the plant and spend a little more maintenance? Or do you want to spend the money upfront on the cost of the plant that's going to take you further into the future?
That is actually what I'm.
So that, that's just a matter of where you want to invest your money. Do you like investing money in a plant that's going to last ten, fifteen years longer or are you investing outside of money in building maintenance? So that's, that's what I see.
Yeah, and like I said, and we, and we said, the filter bottoms on your plant number two, they're more robust. There, there's no doubt about that. The filter bottoms on the, uh, the pre-engineered plant are designed to be able to be moved, mobile, trucked to the site. And so you can't route them in, you know, they'll shake and they'll break that route and it won't be working. So the line of the, uh, there's, there's stainless steel, they've got a plastic plenum that they sit in and it lasts, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. And then possibly in the future, we might have to take that and do maintenance on it and repair it.
Filter bottoms on your plant number two have been there for what?
Fifty years, forty years, Sharon?
Forty years?
Long time. And we have those, we have those in water plants that last, you know, fifty years sometimes. Uh, the Leopold box is one we, we were looking at as far as the design. They're tough to line, they last a long time. And, uh, so all of the things being equal, like I said, we're going to neutralize the pH issues. Going to come into low pH, it's going to hit the airation towers with either plant. That's going to knock the CO2 out and strip the CO2 out, the pH is going to go up. We're going to hit with line, that's going to raise the pH again. So it kind of hits either tank. Water's going to be the same quality. Uh, so it comes down to those filters.
Mr. Gilmore, have our opinion?
I think Jim's design was just fantastic. Isn't that what Sharon said about him? Uh, well, I, I certainly appreciate, you know, the efforts from Constantine about bringing options to you. That's very important. The other side of that, though, is, is that, uh, I don't like to minimize, understand the explanation, but minimize the difference in the years on service. Because when you got to go back out and you have an issue, it's a big time issue. It's not changing batteries or anything.
It's like running twenty-four seven. It's twenty-four seven.
Right. And, you know, our experience here in Perry with the water source that we have would seem to indicate that the concrete is a better way to go. And so therefore, I think that's what we ought to stick with. Yes, it is seven hundred thousand more. I realize that that's a big figure, don't get me wrong, okay? But as a manager, seven hundred out of an eight million plus project is, is not, is not that much compared to some of the operating issues in, in the length of time, you know, that we have in our environment. Uh, I think they have improved, as was indicated, the metal for these package plants and everything, but you go to a lot of communities and they'll talk about problems that they have. And I just don't think we want to do that ourselves. So manager's recommendation would be to direct Constantine to proceed using the concrete. Thank you.
Council, any thoughts?
I tend to agree. The, the, the money you put in, to me upfront, what Mr. Gilmore says is a lot of money today, but it wouldn't take a long, you know, thirty years from now, how much is it going to cost? Um, I guarantee it'll be more than what we're talking about. I, I would rather, I would rather spend the money on lack of a turn on option, that this improvement is going to last a long time, uh, to the best information that we have today in looking forward.
Because this will be your main plant going forward now.
Right.
See, plant one will be decommissioned out here on Main Street. Plant two will become your backup plant. This plant is going to become your main plant for supplying water to the city, Perry, and all the industries on the high and low pressure side. That is going to be your go-to plant. Plant two will now become your backup plant, if you will. And right now, the way we're running and water demands, the plant's lucky to shut down two to four hours a day. On a good day, four hours. On a regular day, we get two hour shutdown. The equipment runs twenty-four seven, you've got to put that. When you start doing, uh, how many hours in a day in years and how much this equipment's got to last, you do math, it doesn't take long, it's a lot of work, and Chad will take care of it, you know? Where are you going to be?
Exactly, about in ten years and just the inflation rate.
Exactly.
Between now and then.
In nineteen ninety-seven, you could build an elevated tank for that to be dollars. Don't try to buy a half million dollar, you know, elevated tank now, a car. Could take you a couple million dollars.
Council, anything further?
Both of them will make water. I'm not saying anything bad about any one of them. I'm just telling you to my heart what I do and my experience will last the city very long. That's one of the only aspects I've got to go on.
The other census for concrete. Yes. Do you have a, do you have a watch and orders?
Yes.
But I want you to remember, we didn't spend the money.
Yeah, but it's not seven, uh, seven figures.
And we will work with your staff to keep that number as low as possible.
Thank you very much. Anything else under the pump stations and evaluation?
Thank you all. Item three D is, uh, be authorized the use of certain city sites for the Perry Plenary Event, September seventh, three nine, twenty seventeen. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I think you may remember, there's Meg Messerly coming in and talking about the Clean Air Event that they're going to be having. It's going to be scattered in different locations around the city. And very briefly, what they do is they have different artists, they invite the artists to come in and they do painting in particular cities and locations. Um, a couple of the locations that was suggested to be used, uh, for, that involve the city would be Evergreen Cemetery, Rosier Park, Ambrose Centennial Park. Um, the Rosier Park is probably okay because you just allow general folks to come in. You just allow anything there anyway, it's a regular practice. Uh, cemetery could be, uh, you'd be a little more cautious about who you authorize to come in, but I don't see any issue with this group by coming in. And then, of course, at Ambrose Centennial Park, you're very cautious about who comes in. Uh, based on the description and what they're going to be doing and everything, it would be the administration's recommendation that you authorize this event to occur in these locations. They're not very crowded intensive, there isn't a bunch of, uh, trash, there's no power to heat all that stuff, so you're passive. So we recommend, if you have no objections, we'll just let them go ahead.
Council? No objection. No problem. There you go. Thank you. Item three C, consider adjustment to the city's policy regarding the annexation of the Parable State Route one twenty-seven. Mr. Wood?
What do you have to say? I'll take this from Mr. Gilmore. We've talked about in the past, we've had a couple times when, um, you know, we've had people request annexation for city services and we've had some substantial growth over in the Wind River and Woodlands subdivision, which is located north or east, depending on your perspective, State Route one twenty-seven. Several years ago, council had a policy that they were not going to allow any more annexations up in that area. You may remember, we had taken that action based on a request at the time from property owners and Warner Robbins and council concur to give that up as a service area. Recently, we've had, uh, two requests that I'm familiar with. The first one came in with some property owners that wanted the city to extend water outside of the Woodlands subdivision. I think you all remember that discussion, just for some lots and everything. And you all had said, no, we're not going to do that. Uh, and then there's also been recently a request to add some addition, approximately forty acres or so adjacent to Woodlands to provide utility services. Uh, the developer was advised that's outside of the city's service area, but we, uh, we had some consideration of this one, so we have this on the agenda tonight just to confirm or alter, that's what council wants to do, uh, the city's position about, um, annexing any more property. Uh, I would like to point out for your consideration is that a number of our city services are all planned and designed based on policies that you admit. And I mention that because if you talked about just this one forty acre, would that be a huge problem for the city? And I would say probably not. The problem is that it would set a precedent and you would have other parcels coming in and that would be a problem relative to us for going out for fire protection, regular service, line extensions, and, and a number of other issues. And I think it's very important that, you know, when you come in, particularly on the growth aspect, of when you come in and establish your policies and everything that you hold to them. We have not seen much growth comparatively, uh, in that area south of one twenty-seven. You may remember, we annexed the telegraph track. Remember that? Well, we're now having, people are coming in to Mr. Woods' office asking inquiries about that and everything. We have a lot of other area that's in our, our service area south and west of one twenty-seven that we plan to be serving. And so therefore, administrative recommendation is issued, uphold the team for the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. The particular developer question was made aware of that about the policy that this council has established and had specifically asked for reconsideration. He currently has, um, roughly a forty-eight acre or so tract that is north of the, of the existing subdivision that is currently annexed in the city period in his, his request. Since we wouldn't add any property to it, would be, would y'all consider de-annexing that forty-eight acres and then annexing the forty acres west, east of the property, basically swapping one for the other? Well, so, um, said I would be more than happy to bring it back to council. And as Mr. Gilmore has, has stated, um, the, the policy would still apply from that standpoint, even though this might be an end zero effect from that standpoint. The bottom line still is that this would be an annexation of property that is not in our service delivery district and would go against the, the current, uh, policy that council has already established. And that's the purpose of why it's going to be included again. And, uh, I would like Mr. Gilmore's previous statement for, uh, your consideration. And I have brought it back to council and asked for, uh, the consideration. So I guess my question is, do you, would you consider swapping this property or reaffirm the policy that is currently in place?
I would want to stay with the policy we have because we took a really strong stance when we were requested to just annex a half acre, an acre and add water. And I, I think we're, we're setting ourselves up for potential problems in the future if we do this. That's good. I don't know enough about it, but right now, I'd say no, don't do it.
Policy stays. Thank you. Item three D, consider painting a portion of the World Center. Please do that to Mr. Die.
Yes, Mr. Die. He's on vacation. Actually, Ollie's probably going to be running out on my hearing. Uh, in your packets, Mr. Die has sent over some photos of the World Community Center. Uh, those of you who have been out there may be familiar that when the center was constructed, they had a band of a lighter color that goes around the exterior there. And as Mr. Die has indicated, we're having problems with mildew and everything on there. We can't just go in and use regular blasting or hard cleaning to the stucco material and everything. So he is recommending that, uh, that lighter color be painted darker color to match the other brick, which hides, you know, the mildew a little easier to maintain. Um, the white color that you say will still stay light color where we have, uh, the identification of the bill, you know, the World Center back there? So you still have black letters with them like back, but all the rest of the band would be, that we painted. Um, I would agree with Mr. Die recommending we go ahead and do this. We didn't want to bring it to you in case for some reason you had some sentimental value to that band that's on there.
I don't have any sentimental value to it. I think you may want to check in with some people with no thanks and talk about the color. If you're trying to match the brick, which is about impossible for you. You may want to go through a darker brown or something that's more attractive. Also, I do know that ribs are very sensitive to ultraviolet light and tend to fade out.
Okay. Let me just shift over.
Color a darker, use a color.
That's fine.
I've seen too many places where people try to match red color, the paint, it just doesn't work.
Anything further, council? Thank you. Item three D, consider a void file mass service proposal. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your board pack, you have a letter from Mr. Crosby, I believe, requesting that in addition to that, there is a location map for you. Uh, the area that's outlined in the blue is not what we're talking about. It's just a reference point owned by the residents, uh, the residents. But right underneath there, everybody with me see all the little lots and all that type of stuff? Those are all owned by the city. And you may remember that the old city landfill is on some of the ones in And you may remember that the old city landfill is on some of the ones a little further west of there.
And we do not have a letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, in the letter, he, Mr. Crosby is requesting to use a portion of the city property. He makes a reference over off of Bull Street, approximately about five acres or so to be used as a transfer location from Interfore and some of the other tree services there that will bring their different cuttings from trees and everything. And he will ride that up there and it will be hauled off to whatever he does with the product. And then, one of the side items there would be that, of course, if we get some of that tree debris and everything, that could go in and do round up and haul off as well. So, the question to you is, are you interested in even doing any more analysis to proceed with that? Now, the location that he is talking about, you may remember, we already had come in and talked with you all about that, so we're going to have a transfer site for the stormwater collection material and the yard debris that's collected. Remember, we had that discussion, you all authorized to go ahead with that. My recommendation on that would be that we get a definite idea about how much Mr. Crosby needs and also how much we're going to be needing. And then, to go back and possibly, if it works, maybe we have Mr. Crosby come in off of Big Indian Creek Drive, right near where I am, on the other side of property that the city owns. I have some, until we do like a complete survey and layout and everything, I have some concern about private company coming in with all their traffic mixing with all our city traffic and everything that's coming in there. I'm not sure whether that site would be, you know, adequate size and all that type of stuff. So, I think probably, at least right now, if the council is not seeing any immediate objection, we will pursue a little further study and come back with more details. For one possible issue that could come up, I'm not saying to Mr. Crosby, is that you may have some other private business people wanting to come in and do something, maybe something similar, some type of spinoff, whatever, coming in and using the city public property for that. I would suggest, at least right now, take a look at these different options and then have something back for you on that question unless you all just absolutely say no, you don't want to proceed and then. There could be, this is kind of trade-off for the public, there could be some advantage about Mr. Crosby's operation in reducing the amount of yard pull for tree stuff and everything that we collect as state. It is a, it would be a service for one of our major quarters.
He proposed to buy this land, don't he?
No. He just wants to use. No, just like the mayor said, my understanding is he just wants to have access to the property, he's not wanting to.
What, then would that put us in insurance files?
Well, if you agree, then of course, he would have to sign a contract. And in the contract, he would have sent a required bill or hold us warrants to get the.
Why would he not lease it? I mean, he is running a business from that, he's going to make a profit off of it. So, why would the city provide him land to do that for the yard?
That is another possibility as well. I think his original thought was is that he's, his operation is providing assistance or services, but I can't say for sure. But then, there'd be another one thing, if he decides to do it. Another factor, important one, is that he may say, okay, fine, if you're going to do this, then there's another support to use to improve the property.
One of the analysis should be, how much of ways do we currently send to the landfill? Or even just drive from there? Because that's the type of stuff that he chips up. And one of our policies, although I'm not sure how much is valid, as y'all well aware, for anyone who hires a contractor to cut trees down or do any yard work and within the city period, they are responsible, they being the contractor, of hauling at all, not just pounding it on the street. That type of stuff, my understanding is that what he would also chip. So, it could benefit some local landscapers as well, which is an indirect benefit to haul the fur, our services down, if they didn't have to haul it. If they're doing what they're supposed to do, hauling it to the dump.
But most services, you know, have done, and all, I mean, I've looked at all the tree services, you know, they pretty well grind up everything themselves and so.
They would do what they're supposed to do.
If they're doing that.
Yeah. It's just another option.
We have the objections to looking into it, although I'm not too confident that he has agreed.
But would you not also have to improve the road? Because that road's a dirt road back there. So, if you're going to be moving heavy trucks in and out of there and in large volume, because you're talking about landscapers and all that, you're going to have, somebody's going to have to bear the cost of improving the road.
And landscaping.
Yeah.
Well, if it's not a flat-out no, is that okay, Mr. Gilmore, do a little bit more work?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of questions about what is planned in the landfill. You know, I'd like to know what kind of truck traffic is going to have for later, how we're going to manage it in and out, stuff. But Mr. Gilmore's right. I mean, you open that up and, you know, somebody might move the next lot for your charge.
On the population, it makes sense.
It makes sense, yeah. I mean, I think that erosion would be an issue too, we would be sure you didn't let the land wash away. Yeah, I guess, where does he do it at now? Is he doing it for him? Of course, a lot of questions on my mind.
Yes, and he's currently doing it for him or for, I don't know where his transfer station is. I think he's hauling it to Hawkinsville right now. But the plant is, one of his plants, or his plans is in Austin. So, what he's looking to do is move his operation from either Conover or Hawkinsville, I forgot which one. I had a conversation with him some time ago. The period, because it's more sensibly located, in order to take that in to the end, and his larger customers are closer here, so that we can then make that transfer and take, or take the fuel, or whatever it is he's providing, to the plant down at Marla County. You know, that's my understanding of his operation, when he explained it to me the first time. That didn't help much, but that's, that's all I know.
Yeah, I know, he's much bigger than that, too. I mean, his company's far bigger than just the bio map.
Yes. So, is that okay with council, for Mr. Gilmore to do a little bit more digging and listen up there, break a little huge storm, stop it.
I'm kind of okay with it, but with the option, I mean, I think we can save money for everybody and it works. But based on what we know tonight, it's not.
Hold on, hold on.
That's right.
Okay. And then, go to that, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Item three F, consider possible program for Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition participation. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you. I've been contacted by Mr. Clark, who is a consultant for the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition, and he has indicated that Clean Air Coalition would like to have different types of projects, obviously that affect the air, in each of its communities that are participating. He indicated that the Clean Air Coalition could contribute maybe up to five thousand, something like that, for a project, and wanted to know if there is any interest on the part of the city period to participate in that. I'm bringing this to you to see if there is any interest or should, are you interested in even seeing what some of these projects relatively feasible would be? For example, if they come in and have a project that's two hundred and fifty thousand, Clean Air's could contribute five, that's obviously a no-go. Everybody with me on that? If they have another deal where they're saying that one of the projects will be like ten thousand dollars, that might be something you might be interested in. You know, an example could be, so y'all may remember, we had talked about this before, but electric charge stations for vehicles, you know, electric cars and all that type of stuff. That might be something that you might be interested in taking, what they have to install, for example, downtown, to kind of attract people coming in and that type of stuff. Or you may just feel, no, we're not particularly interested in getting involved in any of that, but. Or, assuming any further, want to get some type of sensor input, if you think it's beneficial or not. Previously, councils have said, we don't get any, kind of state of.
Counsel? So, what kind of projects there may be, without making any obligations?
At least you can see what's going on, you know, if we do anything or not. We have information that we want to pursue it, do we say yes or no? If you're capable of it, you do it.
Make the budget where I do, right there. Well, my sense is, is that we'll go through and take a list, it'll come back to you in the bottom line, we know that that can be sent to us or anything like that. But I think it would be smart on our part as a member of the Middle Georgia Coalition to say, yes, we actually want to look at it and did not because.
Table, counsel? Anything further, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Item three G is a hotel incentive plan, which is. Mr. Mayor?
Don't worry, Lee, I didn't run out on you. Mayor and council, following up on a conversation we had, it was a few work sessions ago regarding hotel incentive policies. You have before you tonight, your consideration, a revised general hotel incentive policy for the city. The goal here, of course, is to attract new hotel rooms, quality hotel rooms to the city period. But I can tell you, there is a lot of activity around the attraction of new hotels to the community, and typically, this usually starts with, you know, them asking about what types of incentives and that type of thing the city offers. So, basically, what I'm asking for from y'all is a concurrence to move forward with this general outline of incentive offerings. Of course, these will be non-binding. You can see in there that ultimately, this sort of incentive decision will come back to y'all. This gives me a, it gives me the authority to go out there and generally discuss what the city may or may not be able to do in regards to bringing in hotel prospect here to our community. As far as revisions go, we have taken out the component for redevelopment of existing hotel properties. There were a number of concerns about threshold requirements in regards to investment and that type of thing for redevelopment projects. It was one of those, we're taking a big type of things. And then, also, we, we took out the possibility of negotiating utility rates for hotel prospects. Those are the two major changes, those are the two concerns that I got back from y'all after our initial discussion on this matter. So, I wanted to bring back to you revised policy and see what you think. And if you concur, I'd like to be able to look forward with this in my discussion of hotel prospects.
Well, you're basically looking for endorsement from us on the four things that you recommended.
Yes, sir. That's right. And again.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I was going to say, I'm quite pleased you considered a redevelopment, but if somebody wants to come in and tear down an existing one and start over, that would count.
As a, oh, new, yes, sir, absolutely. As a new.
Yeah, but they were talking about going in and basically painting and, you know, putting new furniture inside and stuff.
The larger the bulldoze, the better.
That's the mayor's hat.
Any questions?
And I guess you would really have to look at the point that you mean as being a totally reconstructed, this was in, because, I mean, they, they took everything out except for just the foundation and a couple of walls and stuff.
That's about as close as you can get, knocking the whole thing down.
And now, they're having to do a whole lot of additional work.
They should have just knocked it all down.
They should have.
Yes, I would, I would say so, because we're going to spend a lot.
Yeah, they're going to need four, four or five million dollars in that project, so you're going to end up with a new construction, two of them.
It will reach the investment threshold. Looks good to me, council.
No, I don't have any problem with it.
Very good. Thank y'all.
Thank you. And just following up on that, these are the general guidelines, but he will become to you if there is a particular respect.
Right. Right. Very good. Mr. Gilmore, is anything under item three from items for review and discussion that we need to address at this time?
Yes, sir.
Item four, council member items. Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes, I have one thing, one of these, even remember, one thousand nine column place on Main Street. He says a leak there, and he make a turn about it, he take off, but nobody looked at it on Main Street, I mean, Gilmore, you need somebody to take a look at it, but he, I went by one road, and he grabbed it when I walked in. And so, he was saying that the leak been there for a while, and he was kind of watching the road back.
Okay.
So, we need him to take a look at it.
Show me that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom?
Yes, sir. Advanced disposal, waste of picking up trucks. See, I can see no improvement since last meeting when we talked about it, in my area of town. Tubs are being left open, they've been left in the street. And again, mine was in the street, had to move it. I just can't understand people that put those things out in the street for a cost to you. Doesn't make sense to me. What effort have you made to correct this, or at least requested that?
They have been requested advised that they should be leaving the toders correct side up, off to the side, away from the driveway. And sometimes, I pay attention on that, sometimes I don't.
What do we need to do?
Well, I think what you need to do is what you've already authorized is go up the bid.
When are we going to do it?
It's going out right now. Finishing up the specs right now, we'll be going out, due date will be, I think, around the middle of October, as the contract expires January first.
I want us to remember that the low bid may not be the best bid.
Well, in the bid specification, the bid document we have is, we are requesting the provider to bid two ways. One is with the rear end loader deal, remember that, that's what we had before, and then the others, if they want to go with the one arm.
The one arm thing will work if the driver does it right.
Right.
It's just boils down to who's driving that truck. And if they can't get, unfortunately, we need to get another company. Red lights, can we do anything about that? You can't go through town on Washington Street without hitting at least two out of three. And one between Wyche, I see, Carroll and Main, one car can get through there for that light turns in a lot of cases. And I know they, I know they belong to Department of Transportation, but they need to do something.
We'll have them come in and take a look at it, if that's all we can do.
I know that they don't like the railroad, they're pretty independent, I know that.
Well, what we also wound up doing over on some of the lights that are more directly ours, like Main Street and Germany, you know, if we've had another company come in to take a look at it, other than just DOT, we've had the other company also checks on DOT stuff and get back with relative to the program type of stuff.
The biggest complaint out here is a former of Washington, Main Street. That, that light will not change, it'll go through three cycles at Commerce and Carroll, and that light will not change.
I would ring it, when they say in the pavement there, that corner has to get up and cut.
I don't know.
Because idiot is not working.
No, I get a lot of complaints from that.
Yeah, like Ball and Carroll, it works that.
Yeah, and also down at Main involved, that light, you know, we had a lot of complaints about that, and it worked perfectly too. But the one, there's a bear up there at Washington.
Those years, chief, I've run twice this way. When the light ran, it changes twice and gone.
Can we have that aired in that place? Catch him, chief.
I'm going to look all over the kitchen.
We will check, since the contractor, not the light contractor, but the regular contractor, I believe, is finishing up the brickwork there and everything. So we'll have to go back and check, you know, the timing and whether the loop is correct and all that. We'll see if we can get it correctly. My experience has been, is that it seems to satisfy folks for a little bit, and then we'll write back, no matter what it is, you know. And the big issue, like I advised you about before, is that DOT could care less about Washington. What they're interested in is that Main traffic coming through, going up on Washington and coming up on Commerce. And Main and Commerce are their main routes, the ticket Commerce now to get traffic through, so.
Well, that's where some of the problems are, you're going right up Washington, right up on this town here. You go down with CBS, that light will catch you. And if you are not speedy on the accelerator, the next one will catch you, and one car goes right, one.
Of course, now, this was brought up by the manager before, so bring it up again.
I don't like Eagle, I'm just like.
That you may want to get there, pulling that traffic light out, at Carroll and Washington.
So the pole is done?
Yeah.
It makes sense. What do you talk about the complaints?
Everybody will have to stop every time.
That's right.
How are you, or are you just?
Honestly, definitely, again, I don't have as much problem with first, it's the Washington and.
That is the one I get all the complaints.
Pole was stopped, it'd be better than a roundabout.
That's true.
We will get with.
Thank you.
One of the, I want to ask chief, is he having any trouble with our new cars?
No, sir. As soon as the report came out, we had them all checked, we don't have any CO problems in our cars. We've checked a hundred percent of the fleet. Ford's saying that's an aftermarket equipment addition problem, where they're not properly sealing up the holes they drill in the cars. Apparently, our installer's doing a good job. The day the report came out, the fire department was a Saturday. The fire department checked all of our vehicles on duty that day, they were all good, we've since followed up, had them all checked.
Good, thank you. Those cities would have them parked in cars.
Mr. Gilmore?
Daniel Ford.
Yes, one quick thing. I've been approached from a advertising executive of the Journal, that they are putting together a full-out handout, something relative to first responders. Normally, as we remember our policies, we do not do any of these type of things. However, I think in this particular case, since our first responders are so important and everything to us, that we do take some type of ad. And I recommend, if you all concur with that, that give this to Ms. Palmer, she can handle that. I think this is a different case, rather than a standard advertising or supporting it. Because our first responders are very, very important.
Counsel?
What, what amount?
Full page eight is a thousand, half-page is six hundred. Quarter page three, eight-page.
What do you write in?
I write about a half-page.
I'm sorry?
About a half-page.
How do you see it?
I think our first responders have worked through it.
And so it would be translated if you did.
You're right, you need to fill.
And there, it'll be a magazine this year, last year it was a paper insert, this year it'll be an actual magazine.
We want to look at it, we only want to look at it.
I need one more to say okay.
Great job. We'll give you the word there, boy, today.
Anything else?
Oh.
No, sir.
Department head items.
Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, chief.
Thank you very much.
You got anything?
I do, I do have one, one short thing. I got a letter from the, passed on from the city manager, it may just be informational, but basically what it's saying is some memo that you received from Chief Williams with the county. It's our pre-disaster mitigation plan, it's time to, well, almost time for the county to renew that. And Perry Falls under that mitigation plan. So basically, what's happening is the county needs to request for a grant, for about thirty-seven thousand dollars or so. And in doing so, the City Perry is saying that we agree with them getting the grant, and we will provide services in kind, which basically means myself and someone else on my staff will go to the meetings that they have and sit down, be part of the plan, help design it. And our salaries basically will pay back the grant, so to speak. So nothing comes out of the city funds or anything like that, it's just time for myself and my staff. So I am recommending that you, or whoever needs to sign it, go ahead and do sign, so if you haven't done so already. And it's a good idea, and I think it'll be a good plan, and it'll help out the city as well as the county. So that's all I have.
Sounds good, consensus to participate with the county, I'll see what we move on. We'll be better. You'll get, Ms. Hauser, I guess it is, whatever the document is, I think you sign, or you just not with that. I'll give it to Mr. Gilmore, I think she'll probably have it, I'm not sure that works out. Okay. Thank you for your role in this discussion.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, sir, anything further?
That's it, that's all I got.
Okay, Luke's Department, Chief Lee?
Nothing to deny, sir.
Good. You heard that, I'm sorry. Public Works?
No, sir, nothing to say. Nothing to say.
Even if our media will.
Yes, I have a couple of things. Mayor and council, want to give you a brief update on the two parks that we have sent out a survey to get the input from the citizens on naming the J.C.'s site park and the Third Street's site park. We're getting great response so far in the survey. It'll run through the end of this month, and then once I get the full report, I'll have it for y'all to look at and see if y'all like the park names that they gave us with, we're getting some interesting ones, but a good response, I'm excited about that. And then the other thing is, this Thursday, don't forget, is the Your City kickoff event. You should have received a memo from me and an email, I think that was last week. And hope to see you all there. If you have any questions, let me know, but it should be a good time, and I know the participants are excited to meet you all and be able to learn a little bit more about the city, so.
How long does that run?
It's from five-thirty, seven-thirty.
No, it's not from the program itself?
It's six weeks total, but we.
Once a month?
Twice a month.
Twice.
Yeah, it's on Thursday nights, so. It should end up, they're going to graduate, their graduation ceremony will be the first council meeting in November, is how it's going to end, so.
Thank you.
Our regularly scheduled council meeting is tomorrow. Recouncil is at five upstairs in the conference room. Council meeting is in this room at six, everything is open to the public. We have a business of the month, do we not?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, with the chamber?
We do, thank you, mayor and council. This coming Thursday, business of the month is at ten a.m., and that is Walker, Fulbert, Gray and Moore. And then next Thursday, on the twenty-fourth, is our annual legislative appreciation reception at Go Fish, and that begins at five-thirty and ends until seven-thirty. We already have record attendance booked for it, we are closing off registration by three o'clock this Friday to get Megan the perfect pair of socks to food, that would be the reception. And then, we're very excited, we're doing very well, and great response to the new event that y'all approved for us to hold at Heritage Park, this is Battlefield. Just as a reminder, that is on September the seventh, from five to eight. I think you're going to be very pleased, it's going to create a good new buzz for us here in Perry, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. And in case I miss it, well, I didn't miss it, because I did send him a note. Yesterday was Mr. Gilmore's birthday, was it not? It was.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, yesterday. And tomorrow is Mr. Jackson's birthday, is it not?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Happy birthday, gentlemen, and y'all are still surviving.
You're so warm and tough.
I asked just the kind of guy. Oh, man, okay. That's about all I've got until tomorrow night. At this time, if there's nothing else to come up for, is I'll then have a motion that goes to an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Oh, move.
The motion is, or second? Motion is second. Any discussion here, y'all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries to the House. Thank y'all very.